Everybody please rise and follow in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everybody to our commission meeting on this Wednesday, July 6, 2016. We'll jump right into it. Commissioners, we have, um, first, an economic development agents, agency agenda. Christian, we probably need to adjourn and convene as the development agency.
I'll make a motion that we convene as the Economic Development Agency of Carbon County.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And it was the chair when it was created, correct? So that would be...
Well, I think the last time you acted, Commissioner Potter, was the chairman of the Economic Development Agency, and you haven't made a motion to change that, so I think it would be appropriate for him to continue to so act.
Alright.
Thank you. Our item is the approval of the Price River Terminal Community Development Project Area Interlocal Agreement. And we did review this as a commission, and now we need to make approval of that interlocal agreement so that we can then move it forward from here. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that, Christian?
Uh, yeah, there was a change that Commissioner Hope's caught that indicated the, uh, the value that would be used in determining the tax increment. That's supposed to be the county auditor who would calculate that. And I have made that change on the version I have here, so when you sign this, if you sign this version.
Seth, when I talk to Seth, after I talk to Julie, he has a different version of...
Oh, okay. Alright.
We calculate the, hang on. We, we calculate, my office calculates the incremental value, but we do not calculate the, whatever it's called, the actual value. We take Julie's value that the assessor's office calculates. And from that value, we calculate the incremental value. So the values that are used when calculating increment in the project area still originally generate from the assessor's office. We don't, we don't assess new values for that area. So we take the assessor's value, or if it's centrally assessed, whatever the state assigned as value, and then we run it through the calculation to calculate what the increment is on the project area. But it originally does start with either the state or the assessor's office. We do not do valuations.
So let me, that's right.
So, but it just needs to be clear on the value. We will calculate the incremental value, but not the property's value.
Alright, now listen to this. I want you to see if this language is correct.
Which page are you on?
This is on page three. Uh, it's in sub-paragraph F, in the middle of page three. It says, "In the event," and in the middle of paragraph F, it says, "As such, in the event that a particular parcel from which the agency is authorized to collect tax increment under this agreement is centrally assessed or contains a significant amount of centrally assessed property, the agency, in cooperation with the county auditor, shall determine a value to be used for calculating the tax increment generated that, by that parcel that allows the agency to collect tax increment." So, to me, that reads that, uh, it's, we're talking here about determining the value for calculating the tax increment and not the, um, value of the property itself. That's how I read that, to mean that this paragraph is talking about which county department will determine the value for collecting the tax increment.
And, and as far as calculating increment, that is the county auditor's office. The values, it's, it's kind of interesting, because when it says centrally assessed there, we take the numbers that the state gives us, and from that we'll, we'll drive increment, but... So, it's, it's probably fine to make the change to county auditor.
Okay.
Somebody reading that off the cuff may, may read it first bluff and see, well, the county auditor's assigning a value to this parcel, which is not the case.
Correct.
It's coming from the state or the assessor's office. So...
Yeah, so I think we're good.
That's in the minutes when this is approved, and then we can point back and say yes.
That's right. I, I think then, the county auditor is appropriate. In other words, he'll take the number given by the, by the state with respect to centrally assessed property. He'll take that fair market value that they put on that property, and then, and then shall determine a value for calculating tax increment. So...
Well, I, I wonder, Christian, there in that language, um, if we had left it as county, in cooperation with county assessor there, but then injected, "Shall determine a value to be used by the clerk auditor in calculating the tax increment" that would define both their positions as separate, and I wonder if that wouldn't be a better...
That's not a bad idea. That language would work.
And that might be a better clarification, because the value of the property is by the county assessor, but, you know, and that is in cooperation with the rest of this, and it does separate out the clerk auditor with the tax increment.
You okay with that?
Yep.
I'm good with that.
And that gets rid of the ambiguity that Seth was mentioning people might have in reading that and thinking that, that, that the clerk auditor establishes the value of the property.
That works.
Were there any other corrections or changes that we needed to consider in this? Okay, then we would take a motion to formally approve the interlocal agreement.
I'll make a motion that we approve it as, um, with the corrections mentioned.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn as the Economic Development Agency and reconvene as the Municipal Building Authority of Carbon County.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. We'll step out of that role.
As the municipal building authority, we have two items on the agenda of public hearing. Item number one is a public hearing on the Carbon County Municipal Building Authority Lease Revenue Bonds, Series 2016, in the amount not to exceed fourteen million eight hundred thousand for new court, new court facilities and related matters. Commissioners, this was approved by the CIB, and now this is just the formal process that we need to go through. Is there any discussion before we go into public hearing?
Wonder if we want to turn some time to Eric Johnson.
Okay, that would be appropriate.
Thank you. My name is Eric Johnson. I've been helping the county with this. There are, the, the funding for this project is coming from two sources. One is the Community Impact Board. Their loan is in the amount of six million nine hundred thousand. The other half is coming from Zion's Bank, and their amount is seven million two hundred and forty-nine thousand. The county was able to get some very favorable terms from the CIB so that the, by and large, the Zion's Bank portion will be paid upfront, where they carry a lower interest rate, and the Community Impact Board's interest rate is, is two and a half percent. And Zion's Bank, many of the maturities are below two and a half percent, because it's, it's fairly short-term loan. However, there is, uh, there is a variable rate at the tail end of the Zion's Bank loan that, um, that can be reset ten years from now. And so, that would be something down the road that, to keep an eye on what's happening with that. Questions about the project or how the financing is set up?
The variable rate, a lot of times in these contracts, will have a cap, an upwards cap, that it could only be reset up to worst-case scenario.
Yeah, it's just a little over six percent is the cap that is on this. And, um, that also allows a lower initial rate by having the cap up there. And so, we'll just, we'll just see how things go forward. If, if, if interest rates start to climb too much, you just refund it and take it out. And, and lock in an interest rate before it gets too high.
So at any, any point in time, we could lock it in at, say it's at three percent or something. We could lock it in before it gets too high?
Yes, yes. If you see rates are, are getting where you're uncomfortable with them. One, one point of when it gets to the resolution stage, as some may know, Zion's Bank, the corporate parent, has renamed itself and is now known as ZB National Association. And so, on some of the documents, they, they will mention that name in conjunction with Zion's Bank, and they got back to us just this afternoon and said, "If you would please, just call us ZB, comma, N period, A period." And so, that'll be the one, the one change we know about on the resolutions, but it's, it's just Zion's Bank.
Thank you. Commissioner, the one other thing that I'd like to add before we go into the public hearing portion of it is just that the revenue side of this that pays back both of these bonding issues is through the state court system, through the leasing of the facilities. So again, this is not a taxation or an increase in taxes that will be owed by the citizens.
Right, and, and the financing is structured such that the lease with the courts will pay for everything, which is what you just said, but I, I wanted to make sure that was clear. Pay for everything. Is that right, Mr. Olson?
Correct.
And just to verify, when we say pay for everything, if for some reason there's a change in the rate or any of that nature, the lease still pays for everything?
Yes, yes. Okay, with that, I'll just be right over here. If there's questions, I can answer.
Thank you. If there's no more discussion, we'll open the public hearing at four forty-four. Anybody that like, would like to speak to this, please come to the mic, state your name, and state your concerns. Seeing that nobody is anxious to get up and speak to this, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at four forty-five. I'll make a motion to, excuse me. Don't need to make a motion on that. You've already closed it. Okay. Item number two, then, a resolution of the Municipal Building Authority of Carbon County, Utah. The authority authorizing an annually renewable lease agreement between the authority and Carbon County, Utah. The county authorizing the sale by the authority of its one, of its taxable lease revenue bonds, Series 2016B, in the aggregate principal amount of six million nine hundred thousand, the Series 2016B bonds. And two, it lease revenue bonds, Series 2016C, in the aggregate principal amount of seven million two hundred and forty-nine thousand, the Series 2016C bonds, authorizing a general indenture, a first supplemental indenture with respect to the Series 2016B bonds, and a second supplemental indenture with respect to the Series 2016C bonds, lease ground, lease security documents, bond purchase agreement, and other documents, authorizing a new courthouse and related improvements, authorizing all other necessary actions and related matters. That was mouthful.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and re, and approve that resolution.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll need a motion to go back into commission.
Motion to reconvene as Carbon County Commissioner?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Commissioner, before we move past the courthouse, uh, the new building, maybe we could just do an update as far as the timeline and where we're going with that. I know Seth has maybe dates. If not, we can give the general information, but I think it's good to update at this point.
Okay. Everything, the surplusing of that building, my staff, particularly Lori, has done a phenomenal job getting the stuff out of that building. Right now, July 5th is when the abatement contractors, the building, due to its age, can, there has parts of the building that contain asbestos, and before demolition permit can be approved, that any hazardous material needs to be removed. Those abatement contractors are scheduled to finish their work on August 5th, at which time we'll be able to submit the final certification that all hazardous material has been removed. That permit takes a minimum of ten days to get approved from the Department of Air Quality, and once we get the, the green light from them, we will be able to, to proceed with demolition and then the construction of a new building. So, in the next, next week or week and a half, people will be able to see there will be a construction fence that will be erected up around that port, the building, and that, that corner of the block. And, and from there, it should be, they should be relatively quiet in the abatement process, and then, then the construction stuff will, will proceed after that, just after, just after international days. Then they'll be able to bring in the heavy equipment and start to demolish that.
Thank you.
And the, the bond closing is scheduled for next week for these bonds, so...
Okay, thanks Seth. Um, the first item on the agenda mimics the, the last item on the Municipal Building Authority. So if you'll bear, bear with me, I'll read that all again. A resolution of Carbon County, Utah, the county authorizing an annual, annually renewable lease agreement between the county and the Municipal Building Authority of Carbon County, Utah. The authority authorizing the sale by the authority of its six point, or six million nine hundred thousand taxable lease revenue bonds, Series 2016B. And two, seven million two hundred and forty-nine thousand lease revenue bonds, Series 2016C. Collectively, the bonds authorizing an indenture with respect to the bonds, a ground lease, any bond purchase agreements, security documents, and other documents authorizing the construction of a new court facility to be subleased to the, to the Utah State Courts and related improvements, authorizing all other necessary actions and related matters. So commissioners, we have another resolution. This is now an agreement between the Municipal Building Authority and the county authorizing those bonds.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Commissioners, we have one set of minutes to be approved. The minutes that we have are from May 4th, 2016. Um, this was a work meeting.
I didn't have any changes in this.
No changes on this side.
I'll make a motion to approve the work meeting minutes of May 4th.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. County Employee of the Month, Rose Barnes. Item number four on the agenda, open sealed bids for airport fencing. That's you Seth.
Commissioners, if you remember, we had already bid this at one point in time, but the bids we received were either incomplete or not acceptable, and so we've rebid this project to meet the qualifications of the FAA.
First bid. Okay. Alright, I think so. I'm just looking for it. It's from Northeast Agencies Incorporated. Regarding Southeast Fence LLC, so I'm not sure which one is, they're doing it in conjunction, or which one is actually bidding, but the, the bid is one hundred eight thousand eighty dollars. Our next bid is from Tailor Made Fencing LLC. And their bid is for ninety-four thousand sixty-seven dollars.
Commissioners, we have two bids.
Looks like there's one more.
Oh, is there one more?
There's one more.
I didn't see it.
Don't steal my thunder, Casey.
Sorry.
This is the best part of the meeting. This is what everybody came for. The next bid is from Ward's Landscape. And their bid is one hundred sixteen thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars. And that's all you.
Commissioners, we have three bids.
You know, I'd like to make a motion that we acknowledge those bids, of course, with the lowest one being the Tailor Made Fencing, but I'd also like to have Mel Leesberg, our consultant on this project, review those bids thoroughly and, um, let us know that they're complete this time so that we can move forward in that direction.
Yes, sir. I would do that. Do you want to make a recommendation that if they are complete, you could issue notice of award, or you want to do that in another meeting?
I would be okay with awarding.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'll, I'll make my motion to include that.
You know, depending, obviously, we like to cater to local people a little bit, so if, if at all, they are all, how would you say, complete as far as a package and different things, then we, you know, you know, it does look like it's a little bit more than the normal 10% that we allow for local people, but...
Actually, it's a, it's a federal project.
It's a federal project. We have to buy by FAA, which is lowest bid. Well, if everything's complete, then we really have no other need for another meeting other than to award it, so...
You can accept that next higher bid, the county has to pay the difference between the low bid and the next bid.
Well, that'll be my motion to review and award.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number five on the agenda, new Miss Carbon County Outstanding Teen. If you'd please come to the mic and introduce yourself.
Hi. Um, so, this is our new Miss Carbon County Outstanding Teen, Victoria Nelson. Um, we were lucky enough to have a pageant this year. We had seven contestants, so the program is growing, so I will let her introduce herself and introduce her platform.
Well, I'm Victoria Nelson, Miss Carbon County's Outstanding Teen. Uh, my service platform is called Dream. It stands for Don't Run, Embrace. Autism Matters. And I chose this platform because my brother has autism, and it's affected our family for about twenty years. Yeah, he's twenty now. So yeah, it's, I just wanted to create a, basically a support system for families and those who have autism. And my plans for this year, I want to start fundraising, to start a new chapter for autism awareness in Carbon County.
So is this a national, um...
The organization?
The organization Dream. Is that a national thing?
No.
Or...
I created that.
Okay, you created that.
And the autism organization, is that, that you want to create in Carbon County? Is that also something you're creating, or is that a branch of a national one?
Um, it's basically, it's something that I want to create, basically.
Very good. Fantastic. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll have the other commissioners know that this is my neighbor down the road. And that she has babysat my children, and she is a great person.
Thank you.
Very, very good. Thank you so much for introducing yourselves, and we look forward to your work.
And one more thing, sorry. She will be attending the state competition September 30th, so we are asking for help for her entry fee, which is five hundred.
I think that was already budgeted, wasn't it?
We budgeted a thousand dollars for Miss Carbon County.
Now, Miss Carbon County is different than Miss Teen Carbon County?
Yes.
So, we've budgeted a thousand dollars for everybody. If we were to allocate five hundred, that would be taking five hundred from Miss Carbon County, right?
We budgeted a thousand dollars for Miss Carbon County in the budget. But it wasn't specified whether it was Outstanding Teen or the other one, so...
I mean, we're all one organization. You know, we're all under Miss Carbon County organization, but she attends the state competition for the teen. And, you know, Asia just attended Miss Utah, so it's two different competitions.
And, and what was the fee for the Miss Utah then? Is, have we used that up? Do you know?
I'm not sure. I don't know.
I want to say it was a thousand.
I think she fundraised too.
Because there was two Miss Carbon Counties.
That was last year. This year, have we already donated? For the state competition?
So last year, we had the two, and then Madison ended up not meeting the qualifications for age, so we, the other five hundred was refunded.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to go ahead and authorize the five hundred dollar pageant entry fee, and we can do that out of the commission, out of our commission budget.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion?
We will need document and invoice, so that we can pay it.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All, all in favor?
are the local economy, certain social aspects, and of course, the natural resource management on the forest. And this plan will include objective standards and guidelines, and one of the primary things that we look at is suitability and utility for management of a lot of different things, all the multiple resources, but some of them are vegetation management, timber, fish and wildlife, grazing, minerals, water, wilderness, and recreation, to name a few. So it's pretty comprehensive. So it's pretty important to us that the public has an opportunity to comment on this, and when I say, you know, the role is, again, to look at economic issues as well as social and ecological issues, and when I say local, or public role, I'm talking about local government, state, other federal agencies, and public and private organizations as well as individuals. So the duration of this effort will be at least four years from '16 to '19, and of course, the monitoring will continue for years after that. So there are two real primary phases in the plan that the public, I think, will be most concerned with. The first one's the assessment phase, which we're about to enter in the first week of August, and that phase will last about a year. And that assessment will be on these three aspects that I talked about. And then the next phase is the actual revision effort of the plan that we have now, and that's envisioned to take another two years, and through '19. And then after that, the last phase, of course, is monitoring, which informs all the activity or the actions that we take on the forest to improve things. So we put an A-plus team, I think, together to manage this effort and to interact with the public. And I want you to meet today, first of all, Darren Olson, which I think everybody knows is our district ranger on the Fair and Price District, and next is Blake Bassett, who's the staff officer responsible for the public interaction, coordination, and collaboration, and he's going to talk to you for just a minute about what he's doing in that area.
All right, thank you Commissioners for having us here today. As Mr. Pentecost just stated, I'm the partnership coordinator for the Mantala Sal Plan Revision Effort, and really, the whole purpose of my position is to try to engage the public and try to get their feedback and incorporate that into the planning process. And one of the things that has changed this time around, in the last, or the current plan for the Mantala Sal National Forest, was drafted in 1986, so 30 years ago, and one of the big changes under the 2012 planning rule, which basically dictates how the planning process will progress, is an emphasis on public participation throughout the entire process, so through the assessment phase, all the way through the development of the plan and monitoring. And so there are a few ways that we're going to do that. The first is with open houses and public meetings, the first of which are scheduled July 11th through the 21st in various counties that the forests respite in, so that's the first step. And those meetings, which you'll see in this pamphlet, the schedule for those meetings on the third page on the inside of this trifold, purpose of that meeting is informational in nature, so we're just letting the public know, hey, this is the plan revision process, this is how you can participate, and we'll also be accepting initial feedback at that time. And then in September, when we move into the assessment phase, we're going to hold another set of meetings where the public can bring information concerning 15 various topic, as topics as Mr. Pentecost stated, from social, economic, uses of the forest, recreation, all of those things. They can bring that data to us for us to consider during the assessment phase. And we really plan on reaching out with a full spectrum of tools, whether it be social media, internet, open houses, like I said, flyers at grocery stores, we really want to take a grassroots approach to this. And then the second big thing that's changed this time around in the 2012 planning rule is that the decision-making for the forest plan revision, or the approval authority, has been moved down from the regional forester to, Mr. Pentecost, a forest supervisor, and that, again, is aimed at, you know, taking into consideration local conditions and things like that. So on the back of this trifold is our contact information, again, name's Blake Bassett, I'm the primary contact for public participation. So if you have any ideas of ways that we can better reach the folks in Carbon County, you know, I'd appreciate an email, just letting me know, or if you have contacts of people who you might, who you think might be interested in the process, if you could shoot those my way, I would be very appreciative. And do you gentlemen have any questions?
I do. The meeting in Price on July 11th, time and date, or time and place, where will that be held and at what time, what hours?
Yeah, so the hours on that are 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and I'll have to get back to you on the place for that. I can just check my schedule back there, but this just, this doesn't have the location on it. And there was also an article posted in the Canyon Country Radio on their news website, and on that website, they have the full list of locations, times, and all that stuff, and a radio interview we did with them as well.
You know, you always get more people if you offer food.
Oh, yes, Commissioner, we definitely will be offering food, cookies, and, you know, juice and other things, try to get as many people involved as possible, so... Yeah, he's upping the ante there. I don't know if my pocketbook can afford that.
I believe that's at the Carbon County Event Center.
It is, okay. Thank you very much.
Curfew case, yeah.
Any other question?
I don't have another question. I just want to put in a plug for Darren. He's, I've met with him a couple times recently, and he's done a fantastic job. We've met on both the Nook Woodard Road and the Pottown Road, and he's very good to work with, very personable. We've had some good discussions. Appreciate you sending him out, letting us work with him.
Yeah, thanks a lot. We appreciate your time today.
Commissioners, I have a question on this. I'm Rex Sackle, Public Lands Director for Carbon County. Commissioners, I want to make sure that you're understanding that we, at this time, have a cooperative agency agreement with the Forest Service for land use planning, which includes, to an extent, coordination. I just presented our document to Christian. We need to make an amendment to the contact person, to myself, because when we renewed this, it was with John Jones. This coordinating, this cooperating agency MOU with the Forest Service is only valid till the 16th of December of this year, so I'm sure that we'll have another one by then.
That's right.
The reason I bring this up to you is because I think it's very important and consistent with our county plans, that at the earliest opportunity, we work as part of the interdisciplinary team under a cooperating agency MOU with the Forest Service on this. The scoping, when it comes out, it's going to detect some information that we're going to need, that is probably going to be part of the strategy to develop the alternatives. And the county needs to make sure, with our standing under the social and economic importance of land use planning in this county, that we have a full range of alternatives to choose from and for the people to look at. And I think it's very important. I'm sure the Forest Service understands this.
I do.
So I think we're all going to be working together. We've, I've done this before. In fact, you need to know, I got a little plaque from 2005 that said, "Thank you for your help on the new forest plan." This is a, this will be, I believe, the third attempt that I know of to get a plan since the original one was passed in 1985. So we'll see if it's... Was it '86? Okay. But anyway, that's, yeah, this will be number three down the road. We'll see if it, if it gets through before it gets challenged like the last one, and throw it out.
Thanks Rex.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks. Item number eight on the, on the agenda, review and possible approval of contract with Utah Department of Corrections for housing state inmates. Commissioners, this looks like the, a similar agreement. We don't, as we have in, since I've been here, we don't have any state inmates, but we keep the contract just in case something changes for the future. Anything to add, Christian?
I've reviewed it. It looks like it has the same standard terms that we've always agreed to on this, and I don't have any concerns with it.
Sheriff?
I agree with it. I just want to maintain the contract in case the need does arise for that. We'll have it.
Okay. Thank you. You know, we've discussed before, Sheriff, and of course, these contracts, as they come out every year, but, and I know you've reviewed it, but do you have any concerns at all? We've talked before in commission meetings about the state, the reimbursement, the requirements that are in this. I mean, I know we don't have to take the prisoners, but as we go forward with the justice system, what else would we work, what else do we need to be aware of in it? Because it is the same contract as I read it.
I think we're okay. I don't think it'll force us to do anything we don't want to do. And, you know, the way that our jail has ran over the last few years, it would easy, easy for us to say, we're at capacity, we can't house anymore, if that need arose. But if it got to where we had a low jail population with JRI and the things that are coming, it may be to our advantage to house these inmates. That's kind of the angle that I was looking at.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the contract for housing of state inmates.
I'll second your motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number nine, review and possible approval of on-base master agreement and services. Barry. One quick question, is this the on-base that will work for the planning and zoning, the one that we've been waiting on for three years?
Correct.
Okay.
So, yeah, as you referenced it, a few years ago, our current software package, Sire, was purchased by another company. Since that time, we've been in negotiations with the company on how to roll to the new software. We now have before you an agreement of both ownership of the software and implementation. The ownership of the software is a price of $138,014, excuse me, $138,014.3. That has been discounted to $0. They have agreed to transfer our licensing from our previous product to the current product that we have now, so they call it a like-for-like negotiation. With that, they typically, when they've done this with other counties, they charge for a implementation cost. We have negotiated that down from $21,000 and change down to $0. Basically, the cost to us will be the increase of software maintenance from what we're currently at now to the cost of the maintenance of the new software, which is an increase of $15,000 a year.
So our ongoing fee with this will continue to be $15,000?
No, the annual fee will be $27,000.
But for this first year, it's only 15?
Correct. We've already paid for this year of our current software, and so we're asked to pay only the difference.
The difference.
Once we go live, yeah. Anticipated timeline of the project, we will begin data conversion of, it's just short of 1.5 million documents. We'll begin that as soon as we have a contract in place. We anticipate to go live in phases. The initial phase will be to convert the current documents, such as the recorder's office, the clerk's office, the assessor's office, treasurer's office, GIS, anybody who's currently using that, that we will convert them first. Second phase of the project will be the planning and zoning, we'll be able to do online permits, online inspections, everything that the planning department typically does with contractors will now be an electronic process. Contractors will be able to review their process of their permit online and see where it's at in the process. And then the third phase of the project will be to convert all of the agenda management of meetings such as this. Uh, sorry, I apologize. We'll begin that process with the contract. We're anticipating to go live by the end of the year.
And as with all software changes, there'll be no bugs, no downtime.
Absolutely not.
Guaranteed by the...
And we'll be looking for a new IT director shortly, so...
Yeah, the last time I heard that there were no bugs and no problems, I was down for like, a week.
There's never any bugs in software.
Or in buildings.
Or buildings.
Like the AC in our office until just last week hasn't worked. Anyway, just kidding. Well, not kidding, but, you know, we bear with it.
Okay, we have before us a possible approval.
I'll make the motion that we approve the contract.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Just to clarify, you said you'd be implementing it at the end of the, by the end of the year, but like, full implementation amongst all, or just starting to implement?
No, go-live, meaning turning off the previous package and operating entirely would be by the end of the year.
So in August, you'll be starting with the first companies that you mentioned, and then be through everybody by the end of the year?
Yeah, I can't remember off the top of my head when the first phase goes live, but that's the, that's the biggest portion. Consequently, it's also the easiest portion, but the, those...
So yeah, as you referenced it, a few years ago, our current software package, Sire, was purchased by another company. Since that time, we've been in negotiations with the company on how to roll to the new software. We now have before you an agreement of both ownership of the software and implementation. The ownership of the software is a price of $138,014, excuse me, $138,014.03, that has been discounted to zero dollars. They have agreed to transfer our licensing from our previous product to the current product that we have now, so they call it a like-for-like negotiation. With that, typically when they've done this with other counties, they charge for a implementation cost. We have negotiated that down from $21,000 and change down to zero dollars. Basically, the cost to us will be the increase of software maintenance from what we're currently at now to the cost of the maintenance of the new software, which is an increase of $15,000 a year.
So ongoing fee with us will continue to be 15,000?
Uh, no, the annual fee will be 27,000.
But for this first year, it's only 15?
Correct. We've already paid for this year of our current software, and so we're asked to pay only the difference.
The difference.
Once we go live, yeah. Anticipated timeline of the project, we will begin data conversion of, it's just short of 1.5 million documents. We'll begin that as soon as we have a contract in place. We anticipate to go live in phases. The initial phase will be to convert the current documents, such as the recorder's office, the clerk's office, the assessor's office, treasurer's office, GIS, anybody who's currently using that, that we will convert them first. Second phase of the project will be the planning and zoning, we'll be able to do online permits, online inspections, everything that the planning department typically does with contractors would, will now be an electronic process. Contractors will be able to review their process of their permit online and see where it's at in the process, and then the third phase of the project will be to convert all of the agenda management of meetings such as this. Uh, sorry, I apologize. We'll begin that process with the contract. We're anticipating it go live by the end of the year.
And as with all software changes, there'll be no bugs, no downtime.
Absolutely not.
Guaranteed by the.
And we'll be looking for a new IT director shortly, so.
Yeah, the last time I heard that there were no bugs and no problems, I was down for like a week.
There's never any bugs in software.
Or in buildings.
Or buildings.
Like the AC in our office until just last week hasn't worked. Anyway, just kidding. Well, not kidding, but you know, we bear with it.
Okay, we have before us a possible approval.
I'll make the motion that we approve the contract.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.